We can call the Tuesday, December 1st, 2015, Manistee City Council Meeting to Order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone please take their role?
Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Here.
Mayor Protown-Gustad?
Here.
Intern City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
City Assessor?
Here.
DPW Director?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Public Safety Director?
Here.
And City Engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings we have none citizen comments on agenda related items. Does anyone have any comments on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name. Comments are limited to five minutes.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ron Stone and I'm the Superintendent of Schools from Manistee Area Public Schools. And I just wanted to briefly make a statement related to 12th Street. And the district that I represent, we feel that the 12th Street, the condition that it is in now creates unsafe environment for our students and parents and those that utilize our school district with our building on 12th Street. So I just wanted to make that statement and make you aware of that. And secondly, the condition of the road currently is really an issue for us also. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. So anyone else would like to comment on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda considered by the City Manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval minutes, cash balances, revenue expenses, and notification regarding next work session. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion that council approves that. Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed supported by Councilmember Zalinski to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I just have a question on the revenue and expense.
Would you like that pulled then from the consent agenda?
Yeah, it won't take long. I'd just like to have it pulled.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda pulling the revenue expenses and putting it on the regular meeting.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda without the revenue and expenses. It's four.
I have a motion by Councilmember Smith supported by Mayor Protown-Gustad to approve the consent agenda except remove the revenue expenses and put it into its normal team. Is there any other questions? Michelle, can you please take the role?
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Mayor Protown-Gustad?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the financial report, revenue expenses.
Thank you. I just have a quick question for Ed Bradford if you don't mind, Ben. When I look at the revenue and expenses and the percentage of budget that has been spent, did you see any areas in there where we might be in trouble budget-wise? Are we going to make budget on all of these items?
That's kind of an open-ended question and it's really too early to tell. As you know and per your request, we changed how we're going to be presenting the revenue and expense report, so I'm going to be doing that once a month.
Okay.
But it will lag, so you're seeing the October report, which will be on the first meeting here in December. The quarterly financial update that I provided to council at the end of September has a narrative which tells some areas that I have of concern, and that's what the practice has been. So any areas that I saw that I thought were concerning, I put in that narrative on a quarterly basis. If council would like to see something different on that, we can certainly discuss that. I mean, there are some areas, we've got some overtime issues in the police department, a few areas, but generally those will even themselves out over the course of the year.
Okay, so you think that now things are leveling off from your review in September?
No, I think what I said, I think generally we have overages and underages in various line items.
I understand.
And I think it's too early to predict where we're going to be as of June 30th because that's, you know, another six to seven months from now. A lot of it depends on what the winter is, with the weather and that sort of thing. So I think we're generally on track.
I just wondered if the problems that you thought were a concern were getting worse?
I don't believe they're getting worse. I think some of those have been addressed. Some of the overtime in the police department, according to Chief Bachman, had to do with some of the breaking and entries. They've made some arrests. Some of the other areas I think will probably stabilize.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on.
I make a motion for approval of the cash balance report. Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Smith supported by Councilmember Gutts to approve the financial report, revenue and expenses. Is there any further discussion? If not, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protown-Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business we have none, new business. Consideration of rescheduling the December Board of Review to Wednesday, December 16th, 2015. Traditionally, the December Board of Review is held on the Tuesday following the second Monday in December. State law allows us to be rescheduled on another day of the same week. In order for the City Assessor to be present at the Board of Review, the day needs to be rescheduled to Wednesday, December 16th, 2015. Is there a motion to reschedule?
I make a motion to reschedule the December Board of Review to Wednesday, December 16th, 2015. I'll say that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Smith supported by Councilmember Goodspeed to reschedule the December Board of Review. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Protown-Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of establishing a 2016 poverty exemption guidelines. The adoption of a resolution establishing poverty exemption guidelines for exemption from property tax contributions is required in order for the Board of Review to grant poverty exemptions. The homestead or persons who the Board of Review determines by reason of poverty to be unable to contribute to the public charge is eligible for exemption in whole or in part from taxation under Public Act 390, 1994. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll say that.
There's a motion by Councilmember Whitlow supported by Councilmember Goodspeed to approve the resolution. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to ask a question. I noticed that land contracts are one of the forms of ownership, and I have some concerns with a land contract sale. I've had some experience when I worked for the state of Michigan with weatherization where people that were actually renting were under a land contract that was never filed with the courthouse, and the intent was to quote "show ownership" on the property to qualify for a federal service when in fact they didn't own the property. The contracts generally stated that the seller of the property retained rights superior to the buyer and had to approve any changes to the property or could mortgage the property for whatever outstanding balance there was with the owner, tenant, whatever you would have in control of it. Sometimes this would occur because the people's income was at such a level that they would qualify for the federal program as opposed to the owner replacing a roof or furnace or paying for the services for the home. I see the same potential on taxes where someone would transfer something to someone under a land contract as opposed to a rental agreement and avoid paying taxes on the property as a landlord, or it's done sometimes with family members just simply to take advantage of programs that are out there based on income levels. So I'm not sure, you know, what kind of safeguards could be added to prevent that, but I think that's possibly an issue that could be addressed.
Under the state of Michigan, when you re-
Please introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. I'm Molly Whatstone, your assessor. The state of Michigan, we have certain guidelines that we use to uncap property and show ownership. Recorded land contracts are a type of ownership according to the state of Michigan. When you record a land contract, I uncap your property and therefore I give you a principal residence exemption on your property, and according to my, the assessing world, that is ownership. Now, we do get documents that are lease with option to purchase. We do not count those. That is not a transfer of ownership. So we do make sure that the documents are recorded at the registered deeds office and that, you know, we do due diligence to make sure that they, it is truly a viable land contract.
Is there any period of ownership required before they file for them?
According to your new guidelines, if you were to adopt this, it's three years. You cannot buy a property and then within three, you know, come to the Board of Review unless you have extenuating circumstances, and then the Board of Review can deviate from these guidelines. And this now gives your Board of Review the opportunity to grant up to 100%, but in some given circumstances, maybe the Board of Review would feel that a 25% exemption you could do, and under this policy, they could do that. I've tried to give the Board of Review a little more freedom to act, but now we do have different guidelines in here on, my mother has a life estate on her home, my five siblings and I are on her home. Well, if she's filing hardship, all of our incomes need to be added because we all have an interest in her home, and I certainly can write a check for her taxes. Or between the five siblings, we could split her taxes five ways because we will ultimately enter, get her home when she passes. So there's just a few things that are different in this guidelines, but we've really tried to, this is guidelines that I've been to the tax tribunal on, the chief judge said, "very good guidelines, these are very good." So we just try to implement them where we go.
I thought the guidelines were very well-written. That was my only question that I had was on the land contracts, and I know how we handled those before in conjunction with the state of Michigan when I was working with FiveCap. And that, it got to be, and the life estates, as you said, and the way those were handled because people would say, "I have no income," but there are other owners listed for the property, so.
We are now, since we've started, we scan every document that comes in so that when we get life estates, we can pull that DEDUP for the Board of Review and say, "this person is an owner, this person is an owner, and this person is an owner." And we've also developed, which I'm using for December Board of Review, spreadsheets for the hardship that lists income, expenses, so we have all of that broken down.
Thank you.
I have a comment. Molly, it was a pleasure working with you on the Board of Review this past year.
Well, I'm going to miss you.
And I'm so glad we were able to do that spreadsheet. Yes, for several years in a row, and I'm glad to see that it's getting done.
Just what makes your life easier makes my life easier, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can you please take the role?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Mayor Protown-Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of renewing a license agreement with Lamar Companies. The city licenses land on M-35 to the Lamar Companies for five billboards. The city has negotiated a five-year renewal that increases rent, includes an escalator and strengthens the indemnification section of the agreement. The city attorney prepared the agreement and recommends council approval. Is there a motion to take action?
I'll make the motion. I'll say that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Whitlow supported by Councilmember Goodspeed to take action to renew the license agreement. Is there any further discussion?
I have questions on the location. This says on M-35, that would be outside the city limits?
Yes.
City owns substantial acreage out where the pedestrian and non-motorized vehicular trail area is and then coming in towards town, and there's five billboards that have been out there for many, many, many years, and the city receives the lease income.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Can you please take the role?
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protown-Gustad?
Yes.
And Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a bid FHC Mechanical Contractors. The item under consideration this evening is a bid to install five slide gates and two exterior doors at the wastewater treatment plant as follows. Headworks gate, aeration tank, influent gates times two, final settling tank, influent gates times two, exterior door and air intake louver to the grit room, exterior door to the chemical storage building. The gates were custom manufactured utilizing funds from the fiscal year 14, 15 budget, the two doors including furnishing and installation. Proposals for the project were solicited with two bids received. Debeere Construction for $61,000 and FHC Mechanical for $30,923, which is the recommended bid. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the bid agreement. Is there a motion to take action to accept the bid?
I'll make a motion to take action, accept the bid from FHC Mechanical Contractors in amount of $30,923 for installation of slide gates and doors at the WWTB. Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed supported by Councilmember Smith to approve the bid from FHC Mechanical Contractors. Is there any further questions or discussion?
I've got questions. Jeff, what's the reason for the disparity in these bids?
The bid process that we went through was actually a solicitation. Rick Moore and his staff went out and solicited contractors that are known to do this type of work, contractors that are local to the area, contractors that we've worked with at the plant before, and then contractors that also Spicer has worked with. Almost all, everybody that we talked to is extremely busy. This was considered a very small project for them, so I believe that FHC is the only one that really put forward an honest bid, if you will. And the second bid was just a number that they put out there. If they get it, they're going to make a lot of money, and if they don't, they didn't put a lot of effort towards it.
Now, this is only, we only had two bidders?
Correct.
Do you know how many companies we solicited?
Four. Four. Four that were interested, that were interested in receiving the packet from us.
Do we need to look at broadening the base of bidders or?
Well, this, again, this is very specialized work, especially on the gates. The doors, there's other contractors that can do that, but the gates are pretty specific to treatment plants, and yeah, we could have gone through a whole engineering process and gone statewide, but I'm not sure the results would have been any better on this just because of the size of the work.
Is there any warranty on their work or on installing these gates?
The installation, typical agreements on this type of work is one-year warranty on the work that they perform. That's the standard in the industry. And then the gates, the gates we had custom made last year, and so those come with a separate manufacturer's warranty.
Do you know how long of warranty on the gates?
I don't, I don't recall specifically. The gates that are, I mean, they were custom manufactured in the same as the original plant, so those original gates are probably 30, 40 years old already.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can you please take the role?
Mayor Protown-Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into an agreement with the Spicer Group to complete asset management plans for the city's sanitary and storm sewer systems. The Public Works Department has applied for it and received a solid grant from the state of Michigan to complete asset management programs. Total project amount is $1,905,000 with $1,757,500 to be funded by the grant and $147,000 to be funded locally over the next three years. At this time, council could take action to approve the Spicer Group to complete the asset management plans.
I'll make the motion. Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Smith supported by Councilmember Gutts, Whitlow to approve the Spicer Group to complete the asset management plans.
Have a short presentation if you would like, just to kind of review where we are in the whole process.
Please.
I have a question. We had the budget for this year to purchase a camera, and they talk about, you know, taking pictures of pipelines. Have we purchased that camera? Sewer camera?
We're in the process of getting competitive pricings on that, on that camera. I think we've got $23,000 budgeted. The camera that we're looking for is more of a smaller unit, self-contained, for doing spot inspections when we have a problem. The type of televising that we'll do here, companies have brought in their demo units, but they're a quarter million dollars for the type of equipment that'll be doing the work on our pipelines as part of this grant.
Because we demoed one, right?
We did, yep. Well, we demoed for the small camera that we actually have budgeted, but they took it upon themselves to bring all the equipment and tempt us with the quarter million dollar one, which, to be honest with you, isn't justifiable for the size of our system and the amount that we would use it. So that work, as Sean will explain, will be subcontracted as part of this grant.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Sean Middleton, Spicer Group. I guess we gave a presentation almost a year and a half ago, and so not all the council members were present, so I'm going to very quickly go through an update of the council on the SAW, Stormwater Asset Management Wastewater, and hit on real briefly what the process has been in the last year, and then kind of highlight what the actual grant will be doing. And there's a lot, it's an immense amount of work, so I'll just be hitting the top end of it. So if you have any questions, you can save them towards the end, or I'd be happy to sit down with anybody, talk over the phone, or meet and go through some of the nitty-gritty details of this. So I want to move very quickly through it, so stop me if you need to, but there's a lot to kind of head on this. So the state of Michigan allocated $450 million for asset management for communities in Michigan back in 2002, and with time, they basically came to a grant application that was released in late 2013. And about that time, we were coming on as engineer of record with the city. We started a dialogue with city council and staff and worked towards preparing a SAW grant application. We passed some resolutions that the city had to pass as part of the grant application, had some, we presented at a council meeting, and ultimately we submitted an application in November of 2013. At that time, a lot of applications were submitted to the DEQ while exceeding requests for $450 million, so the state went into a lottery for allocating these funds. We're in the third cycle of that lottery right now. They allocated about $100 million a year. The city of Manistee was included in this third cycle, and so in September of this year, an approval letter was received by the city of Manistee from the DEQ for a SAW grant. This, and then following that was an agreement. They had a really quick turnaround time. The city signed that agreement, submitted it to the DEQ, and now we're currently waiting for the DEQ for their signature to, for the final execution of that agreement, and that should be coming shortly. With that agreement executed, the city can now start to look at any reimbursements for any expended funds. So as early as December or January, we're actually going to be looking at submitting for some reimbursements for the city, and I'll explain that. This is just an exhibit out of the, out of the agreement, and it can, there's basically two main parts to this asset management plan. There's wastewater asset management, that's for $1.3 million, and stormwater asset management for approximately $600,000. The city has a $147,000 match, and I'll give a little bit of details on that. When we first submitted the grant application, the grant is set up for 10% match in the first million and 25% on the second million, and we pursued getting the city listed as a disadvantaged community. And we've got that, we were successful in getting the city listed under wastewater for disadvantaged status, which means there's no, there's no match recorded by the city on the wastewater portion of this, of this grant. So the match kicks in on the stormwater side of it, and it's at 25% for the stormwater. So it could have been $326,000, the grant, the match is $147,000, and that, that is as-you-go kind of a match, so as funds are expended, that match will kick in on the stormwater side, spread over two to three years. To kind of compensate for that a little bit is, in the last, starting January 1 of 2013, there are costs the city has done under other projects and other fiscal years that are grant-eligible, and those, those include some of the work we did of the mobile mapping, if you recall, GIS work, INI flow monitoring work, the actual grant application submittal, the rate study by Burton Associates. Those are all grant-eligible activities. We will be submitting those in December or January for reimbursement, and they are about $120,000 worth of work. So that's really one of the first things that will happen in this grant, is we're going to submit the work that's been done over the last two, three years. As I mentioned, there's two major components, wastewater and stormwater asset management. Your system has 50 miles of sanitary, there's over 1,000 sanitary manholes, 14 lift stations, the treatment plan with all its components. Stormwater side, we're estimating at least 30 miles, storm sewer, 600 plus or minus manholes, 1,300 catch basins, just to give you a sense of the breadth of the system that's out there. Most of it, a lot of it is unknown in terms of its specific condition. So the DEQ and their asset management, both stormwater and wastewater, has five main components, and you'll see it, you'll see different labeling of these, but in general, these are, these are kind of the highlights of what they want to see in an asset management plan. The first part of it is inventory and condition assessment, and this is the bulk of the work. This is where we're doing a lot of field work, subcontracting, subcontracting, televising, GIS development, all those things, the front-end work, this is where a lot of the heavy lifting is done. And I won't go through this in any detail, but some of it, you know, some of the items include the televising Jeff had mentioned. There's a, there's a standard process for televising and assessing condition of pipes. We'll be using that standard condition assessment. It's similar to Paser ratings with streets, very similar, so when we're done, we'll have a ratings in every pipe throughout the system that we can use for looking at, you know, comparative reasons. Similar to the pipes, there's also a standardized process for looking at manholes. This particular, we'll be inventorying and condition assessing all the manholes in the storm and wastewater side. What you're seeing in the photo here is a piece of equipment that'll be used that's dropped into the manholes, it scans the manholes three-dimensionally, it takes photos all the way down to the bottom and back out, and really what that does is just allows for safer field condition for one, because we're not going, entering every structure, and then allows us to go back to the desks, our desktops, and do the condition assessment. So this is just, this slide is a sample of what you get out of it. On the left is a point cloud of the data, just a little idea of what it looks like. On the right is an unfolded picture of the manhole, so it's actually, you're looking at a, you know, a round manhole rolled out, and that just allows us to look closely for the condition, pipe sizes, pipe materials, inverse, that kind of thing. We can do it right in the desktop at that point. And this will be all data available to the city- And this will be all data available to the city and staff, you know, in a GIS database. We'll have to look at the treatment plan, tell all its components, uh, the fourteen pump stations will be evaluated, uh, inventoried and condition assessed. That data is, uh, once we obtain on the pipes, from a condition standpoint, we will be looking at, um, really updating the GIS system. And right now, the, the GIS for the city is probably in the twenty, thirty percent range on stormwater and wastewater. We'll be, uh, completing that whole process, so with our mobile mapping, we know the location very specifically of all the manholes and catch basins, that'll be incorporated with color code conditions, and now we can map out, you know, the condition of pipes and look at it, um, again, similar to PESER ratings, um, as we go through the process. The second part, the second phase or, you know, section of the DEQ's outline is level of service. And this is, I won't go into details on it, but basically it's looking at, you know, what is the, what are the goals of the city and stakeholders with the wastewater and stormwater systems? This is where you're really identifying, where do you want the system to be ten, twenty years down the road, kind of what are the goals? And obviously, it's incredibly important, because this is, uh, this is directly related to costs. So the higher level of service you want to provide, higher the cost, so we need to back into, a little bit back into what those costs might be, um, from the rate study. The minimum level of service is basically your satisfying local, state, and federal guidelines, you know, meeting all those requirements. Critical assets, this is not looking at the condition of all your assets, but how important they are, how critical they are. So a pump station that sits, uh, serving a thousand people is a lot more important than a, uh, manhole that's, or a sewer that's serving one or two people. So that's all evaluated and looked at. Uh, the proximity to a water body may make something more critical than, uh, something that's farther away. When we take that information and looking at the condition and its criticality, we kind of can assess the overall risk. And what we have, what we can come up with is a map that may be similar to this, is not only the condition of your sewer system, but how critical those things are and the, and the product of both. And this is really where we get to the level of now we can look at capital improvements, because this is the best place we can really invest our money, um, based on, uh, criticality and the condition. I combined the last couple, um, revenue structure and capital improvements. The Burton Water and Sewer Rate Study is right in line with what the state, state Saw Grant requires, and so we'll be leveraging very heavily on that. Um, and they outlined cap- capital expenditures in that, in that study. So to some extent, we'll be backing into that with our capital improvement plans, because you have the rate structure set, you're a little ahead of the game on that part of it, so, but we'll be leveraging, leveraging very heavily on that. And then from that, we'll ultimately have a twenty-year capital improvement plan, uh, that'll be developed and put into our documents. And just to finish up, you know, the Saw Grant is a grant for asset management, however, there's a lot of spinoffs the city's gonna be provided with this. This is just a short list here in terms of INI sources, looking at removing CSO eighteen, uh, water system inventory and asset management, we'll be able to use this as a baseline. There's gonna be a lot of products that we can kind of, uh, jump on. So with that, if there's any questions?
Our matching requirement's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Correct.
And, and you anticipate we've already got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in reversibles to apply for that?
That's, that's.
Yeah, the, and I tried to explain that in my memo to support this agenda item. Some of the, some of the expenses that we have already incurred are attributed to the sanitary side, some are attributed to the storm sewer side. So the stuff that we've already spent that can be attributed to the storm sewer asset management can count as our local match already. The majority of that hundred and twenty thousand dollars that Sean talked about, though, pertains specifically to the sanitary sewer side. So while we can't count that as match, that's money that we can recoup back out of the grant, put back into the water and sewer funds, but then that's cash on hand to be able to, to budget in future budget years for our matching money. So we've put just, uh, I think, twenty thousand dollars aside this year in this budget, knowing that we would just be getting the process off the ground, and that can match force account work, work that our staff does, and then also future budget money in, in years two and three.
Included in this plan is additional water rate studies, and I think as Sean pointed, Burton and Associates has recently done a comprehensive water rate study. Is, is that an invalid product, or?
It doesn't, it doesn't update the rate study specifically. It uses the data that was created when the rate study was done to further the Saw, the,
The answer to the question is the DEQ requires a rate study, but our rate study qualifies and meets that requirement.
Okay.
So we won't need additional rate studies?
Not in the near term.
Not in the near term.
Not in the near term.
Not in the way.
Because I, I, I thought the original rate study was predicated on, on the thought of the aging infrastructure, it needs to build some funds and.
All of them's together with the Saw.
Okay.
It was an anticipation of having an asset management program to be able to fund those improvements.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Another discussion of questions? You can take your role.
Councilmember Beeden.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Protim Gustad.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution regarding 12th Street. The matter of 12th Street between Oak and Maple Streets has been discussed for many years. The city and other governmental agencies have attempted to negotiate the acquisition of additional right-of-way for the improvement of 12th Street with no success. Every possible effort has been made to avoid having to acquire the right-of-way through a resolution finding a public necessity. It is not possible to reconstruct the street within the existing right-of-way. The only remaining option to the finding a public necessity for additional right-of-way is to construct 12th Street as a one-way westbound within the existing right-of-way. City council has previously heard from maps, the city engineer, and public safety director regarding whether this is a safe and viable option. It is not. The expansion of 12th Street into Filer Township between Maple and Oak Street is necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare. The city engineer has concluded that in order to expand 12th Street to the point of it being safe for two-way travel, twenty-eight feet of right-of-way would be required immediately south of the city boundary from the two parcels immediately west of Maple Street. Should city council determine that a public necessity exists for the additional land to extend and improve 12th Street, and in it declare as such, it could take action to authorize the appraisal of the property, make a good faith offer to the property owners in accordance with the appraisal, declare a taking and authorize the commencement of a condemnation action if a negotiated agreement in lieu of litigation was not made. If council were to determine that it is desired to move forward with the improvement of 12th Street as described above, a proposed resolution prepared by the city attorney's office is provided. The interim city manager recommends city council take action to approve the resolution. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution finding that a public necessity exists to expand and extend 12th Street twenty-eight feet south between Maple and Oak Streets and over the two privately owned parcels immediately west of Maple Street and south of the city. Appraise a property required for the expansion and extension, make a good faith offer to the property owners in accordance with the appraisal, and if the good faith offer is rejected, take steps necessary to condemn the property.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodsky, supported by Councilmember Whitliff, to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion or questions?
Yes. The, the street itself, now, I'm of the understanding that because the street requires reconstruction, we must construct it to the major street standard and have this width.
That's correct.
Okay. Is, is there encroachment on the private property now as the street currently exists?
Yes. Probably eight feet.
Okay.
In addition to a water line that's underneath the southern portion of the street, but we do have an easement for the water.
Any other questions?
Just so that everybody is on the same page with this, as far as understanding the problem, the way I, at least the way I see it is, part of the problem is on that, on the north, um, east corner of that, across the street from the two property owners, uh, that is in a platted subdivision, or, and it's, allows for thirty-three feet on the 12th Street side. Uh, and that's pretty normal, when you see two plaques up against one another. The property owners are in, they're, they are not in a platted area, they are in, their legal description is in meets and bounds. Now, I asked Jeff before the meeting, and I just want to repeat this if you don't mind, Jeff, um, normally, when you have a, a legal description in meets and bounds, there generally is an exclude, an exclusion for right-of-way on it. Is that not correct?
Correct.
And they have that thirty-three feet exclusion in their survey, right?
It references right-of-way, right.
Right, but it's not dedicated.
Those are actually legal questions that I would refer to say to the attorney. The answer's still the same, but.
That's correct. There's a reference, not only within survey, but there's a reference within prior deeds indicating that the property conveyance was subject to existing road right-of-way. Uh, the issue of whether that constituted an implied dedication was one that was raised with the court in the litigation that was dismissed, and the court, um, did not accept that position.
Okay. But in a condemnation case, that would be slightly different?
No, I don't think that the, the issue of whether or not their property descriptions, uh, in deeds reflect that they're subject to a road right-of-way will have any impact on the issue of the condemnation.
Okay. I don't think it will either, having been through a very horrendous one done on Oxford. That wasn't public safety that you and I talked about with the fifty-six parking spaces.
Quite a famous, kind of.
Very, very one, very famous. Don't stand between a crane and a flatbed truck when they're unloading bumper curbs.
Mr. Saylor, could you go through the steps for me, please, to, from, if we vote yes on this tonight, what's gonna be, what, what other steps going to be?
The, the first step is going to be to secure appraisals of the property. Uh, and there's a two-appraisal process, appraising the properties as they exist now, and then appraising the properties as they would be if the condemnation were to go through. With the results of those appraisals, the city would make a written good faith offer to the property owners based upon those valuations. The property owners would have a period of time to either, uh, accept or reject, uh, those valuations. There's also probably the opportunity for discussion if they desire with the city on the, uh, offer that's been made. If a, um, resolution cannot be reached, uh, then the city, uh, would be able to declare a taking of that twenty-eight feet of those two properties. Um, and, um, after the taking, the condemnation process would involve a lawsuit that is sort of a bifurcated or two-part lawsuit. One is, uh, a determination of whether there is a public necessity for the expansion of 12th Street, uh, and, uh, assuming that were true, uh, the second part of that lawsuit would be a determination by the court of what compensation was required, what just compensation would be required to the property owners.
In your professional opinion, um, what length of time are we looking at? Are we looking at six months, a year, two years?
Um, the, the appraiser, uh, I talked to an appraiser that, um, has been used by my office at least in, in the past for road condemnation. Um, that could happen fairly quickly, I think, within the next month. Um, that, uh, the offer would be made, um, if, if resolution is not possible, um, that's obviously, we would hope that, uh, a resolution with the property owners could be reached. A resolution was not, would not be possible, I would anticipate that the determination of public necessity could be made by the court if litigation is required, um, sometime before next spring, hopefully.
I would follow up and say, once that step has occurred, then we can proceed with the road repair and construction. We don't need to wait for that final step, the determination on what the value is. Once the court has ruled that there is a public necessity, then we can go ahead and build.
What I hear you saying, in reality, it could be, when school starts next year, the road could be longer.
That, that would be, I, I think, the objective, we talked among ourselves, staff, about, um, that question, and, um, the goal would be to proceed as, as quickly as we can, because, um, the, the goal being that we'd want to have that road repaired if possible by sometime next spring, spring.
Thank you.
Uh, just a quick comment on financing. If we go, if we go to the lawsuit, um, won't we have to escrow an amount of what the, uh, purchase price should be?
We'd be, yes, we'd make a taking, and our lawsuit would, uh, we'd take a position on what the compensation, just compensation would be.
Okay, and then should we also estimate in some additional, for, um, legal fees? And that's maybe a question for Ben, I don't know.
There certainly will be legal fees involved. They're relatively nominal compared to the scope of the overall project along with the reconstruction. We've talked in executive session about the cost of appeal of the judge's recent decision, and we expect our total cost under this scenario to really not exceed what our cost of an appeal would have been under the alternate scenario. And under the alternate scenario, we wouldn't really achieve anything even if we won, because it would just get referred back to the court again. So economically, this is reasonable and the best option.
I'm just mentioning it so we can keep it in mind when we go to budget session, that we need to think about escrowing.
Including budgeting the cost of the street reconstruction, which was really anticipated a little bit in this year's budget, but would need to be scheduled definitively in next year's budget.
If I understand correctly, we pay their attorney expenses also?
Um, we can be responsible for, um, appraisal costs if they seek their own appraisal. And if ultimately, on the just compensation issue, there's a differential between what we are saying we should compensate the property owners at, and what they end up recovering, we can be responsible for their attorney fees up to one-third of whatever that differential amounts. It can really, in this case, what I could suspect would not be a significant amount.
Hey, you know, since we've got all the principles here, I just want to make sure that this process is moving forward, uh, out of a sense of necessity. We cannot reconstruct the street safely without taking this action. And, and, you know, there's a lot of rumors and, and feedback I'm getting from people, it's like, how, how can you be throwing people out of your homes? So, you know, we're not, we're not taking someone's homes. We're, we're taking a section of property that still leaves them with legal offsets for zoning. We're not doing it for aesthetic purposes, um, it's just for view, we're, we're doing it out of necessity by state law, uh, in construction.
We cannot construct a two-way street within the existing right-of-way. We could construct a one-way westbound, and that is an option, but we, from a staff perspective, including public safety and maps and the city engineer, do not believe that's a viable option.
Okay.
Filer Township setback rules, I think it's forty feet, and these lots are a hundred and ninety-three feet deep?
I think thirty-five feet is the front yard setback.
Okay.
And the twenty-eight feet was something the city engineer reviewed and felt that we were well within the front yard setback. Also, um, the minimum lot size, um, will not be affected by a condemnation.
A variance, okay.
If they were, we would be responsible for seeking the variance, uh, but they won't be, so there's no variance that will be necessary, especially use permanent.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure that we talked about that tonight.
Included in the, the reconstruction of the road, um, curb and gutter, um, any green space, um, or wouldn't?
Yes.
Curb sidewalks, yeah.
The twenty-eight feet, uh, rather than thirty-three feet, means that we narrow the green space to boulevard a little bit, but there still is boulevard, which is really necessary for snow storage. Uh, there is a sidewalk, there is anticipated landscaping, and all the discussions today have discussed leaving dead water and sewer laterals for the day that either the current or subsequent owners might want to tap in.
And again, I'll reiterate what, uh, uh, Councilmember Smith said, uh, this, this group of, of individuals doesn't take condemnation lightly. Now, this was literally a, uh, and anybody who's been in the city of Manistee for any period of time, driving kids to and from school, knows that that road has been a painful reminder that we have to fix it, and, and it's been a big challenge, and, uh, we've gotten to a point where, uh, our, our only solution is. And we've gotten to a point where our, our only solution is to, to move forward with this, this option. And, you know, as painful it is, and as painful as elected officials have with condemnation, it's really our only, our only hope to, to really fix that road. So we're hoping that before that happens, the property owners are willing to negotiate with us and, and work through it, so...
Would there be any advantage to delaying this until Mr. Taylor is aboard, so that we could talk about it?
I just posted a matter with him at some line this afternoon, and he's perfectly comfortable with my recommendation of the council.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you know, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Councilmember Zlinsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Gustafen?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of application to boards and commissions. We had one board that had an opening, the Board of Review. It was a one regular member, term ending twelve, thirty-one, eighteen. However, there were no applicants. Next, we'll move on to notices, communications, and announcements. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from Ms. Shaw Wright, who will report on the activities of the City Parks Office.
Good evening. In the city clerk's department, we only have two full-time employees. Full-time is Mary Bachmann. She's the deputy clerk and in charge of payroll and benefits. And then there's myself, and the city clerk and the chief deputy treasurer. And then we have several part-time election workers. Some of us are a little familiar from last year, but some of the certifications Mary has, she's a master municipal clerk, which is, she's certified through the International Clerks Association. Through the state of Michigan, she's certified in Michigan Municipal Clerk, insurance agent. And then she's taken several classes on the payroll and benefits. She's been with the city for sixteen years. And myself, I'm also a master municipal clerk and certified through the state of Michigan. Been here for twenty-six years. Certified through the Public Finance Administrator. That's through APT, American Public Treasurer of the United States and Canada. And I'm a certified professional treasurer through Michigan. We also work closely with the Finance Department and Treasurers Department. With Heather, who's the deputy treasurer, she's currently, we're trying to get her cross-trained. She's attending the Clerks Association, the Clerks Institute, I'm sorry. She's completed two, three years with that. She recently completed the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Institute, which was another three-year program, and she's waiting for her certification through the state. Ed Bradford is the CFO and City Treasurer. He's been here for thirteen years. I forgot to mention, Heather's been here for fifteen years. And is a certified Public Finance Administrator, certified professional treasurer, and I'm sure there's many other certifications I didn't write down. Kelly McCall is our newest employee, started in October. She's in charge of accounts receivable, one and water billing. And with Kelly being hired, that allows us to start cross-training more. Heather's going to be taking over payroll, is starting to get trained on that now. Mary will be taking over the accounts payable. Once she trains Heather on the payroll, then she'll start on her cross-training. Some of our department responsibilities are elections, payroll, insurance, accounts payable, IRS reporting, council minutes, archiving. I won't read them all, but there's many, many items to take care of. I wanted to focus on the elections for this year. We participated in three of them this year, the May election, August, and November. The average turnout, I use an average of just over forty-seven hundred registered voters. Doesn't look like very good turnout. And in May, we had twenty-four percent turnout, which I thought was very good for special election, but it's eleven hundred people out of forty-seven, so... The cost of elections, November and August, we consolidated precincts, so we didn't have to hire as many election workers. November, I estimated the cost was thirty-four hundred. August was twenty-one hundred. May was five thousand. And then I was trying to compare them to, last year we had larger state elections, and then the presidential election, three years ago now, that cost was nine thousand. So this upcoming year is a presidential year, and we were trying to find ways to lower our costs, improve our efficiencies, and the, how the elections are run. We don't want to spend nine thousand dollars on, the presidential primary in March wouldn't cost that much, but the August and the November ones are quite large. So we discussed this at our election commission meeting, and we approved the permanent consolidation of the election precincts. Just mentioned, election commission is made up of the city attorney, city assessor, and myself. And this was authorized by MCL one sixty-eight and six five eight, which gives the election commission the authority to do this, and not have to go through the governing body. It took effect November fourth, the day after our November election. So what this means, we'll have seven individual voting precincts instead of two. The precinct locations will still be, the polling locations will still be at the Marina Building and St. Joe Parish Center. The voters will still go to the same locations that they aren't used to going to, so there will be no change for them, other than they'll be called Precinct One and Precinct Two. Precinct One, which is at the Marina Building, will include city council districts one, two, and three. And Precinct Two is four, five, six, and seven. This is similar to what we did in August and November. And I want to make sure there's, you know, there's no changes to the council district orders. And the reason we wanted to consolidate is to improve the, the voting experience for the citizens, to lower the cost, to improve the efficiencies and lower chances of error. To improve the voting experience, the, the voters would continue to go to the same polling location, but there's only one, there'll be one set of election workers there. Instead of, the Marina Building had three sets, St. Joe, we used two different rooms, but we had four sets of election workers. So you go into the building, and it's only, you go to one table. You know, you don't have to worry about which precinct you're going to, or which table you go to in that building. There'll still be a large number of voting stations to accommodate everybody. There'll only be one tabulator for ballots to go through. In the past, there's been some confusion, you know, do you put ballots in? You know, this tabulator, this, you know, there'll be three of them at the Marina, four at the St. Joe. So there's only going to be one in each building. It'll improve the flow of traffic. Instead of have three separate lines coming through the building, talking to the Marina, there'll be one line. We will, are planning on more workers, you know, to accommodate the, you know, have the same number of people coming through, but just less confusion. To lower the cost of elections, like I said, it'll be fewer workers, less supplies needed, the equipment costs for maintaining them, programming, testing will also be lowered. For efficiencies, fewer types of ballots will be needed. In the past, for each precinct, we had one stack of ballots, at least one stack of ballots for each precinct. So when we do the ballots in-house for the absentee ballots, we would have seven separate stacks of ballots. And that's where I had mentioned about the, lower the chance of error, so you know, you know, you've got two, you've got fifty-fifty. Less time will be needed for setup and tear-down of the polling locations. At the end of the night, we'll only have two sets of workers come in to deliver their results to our receiving board. And then, once the receiving board goes through their process, we'll, we take the results up to the county clerk's office, and allow us to get the results up to them sooner, so that they can, in turn, post them on their website center. So instead of all this, this is just the equipment we use at the Marina. You know, laptops, the voting, the polling locations, the signs, and so it's, and three separate tables of workers, of at least four in each table. It might not look exactly like this, but the, the equipment, we only need one of each of the equipment. We need a voting booth in the upper right. For larger elections, we have several voting booths, we set up plenty of them to accommodate the number of people coming through the building, but one table of workers. And like I said, I anticipate maybe having instead of four workers, maybe six or whatever the needs may be. So I was trying to estimate the cost of doing this to consolidate. For this year, we budgeted two elections, we actually will have three. The wages were estimated at five thousand dollars apiece for the two. So far this year, we had two small elections, and for the wages, we only have spent twenty-two hundred. And that's with consolidation on a small election. In March, I mean, estimated a little bit higher on the wages, figured two thousand, so I estimated the savings for this fiscal year about fifty-seven hundred dollars. So almost around fifty percent. The next year, I was trying to estimate with the larger elections. In the past, we estimated sixty-five hundred for wages per election. And just figuring on the high end, I thought it was three thousand per election with fewer The savings would be about seven thousand. And this is not with all the supplies. Some elections, the county pays for the supplies, some we do, it depends on the election. Tried to do a map. That shows Precinct One on, on the west side by Lake Michigan, and on the east side, Precinct Two, the dividing line straight on Main Street, crossed to Washington Street, and it goes over Monroe. Which is similar to, this is an older map of the city council districts. If you go right down to the center, that's, that same boundary line. So precincts one, two, and three, I'm sorry, the city council districts one, two, and three will now be Precinct One, called an election precinct. So it's kind of confusing all the terms that they have. Abette, do you have any questions? We will be sending new voter ID cards to everybody, so they know that they're Precinct One, Precinct Two, which building they go to, but it doesn't change the council districts. Just want to make sure. I reiterated, iterated that.
Thank you.
Michelle, are there any opportunities for volunteers to help subsidize some of the labor that we have, kind of like youth in government at the Catholic schools and things like that, may, may be interested in participating?
The problem is, they have to attend the school, an election worker's school, and when we've had students interested in participating, the schools are usually in the summer, so that...
You're not kidding, because kids are there?
No. And if they go to the school, or if anybody else wants to help, you get certified, and it's good for two years.
Okay.
Well, consolidation is nice. It's going to make the process much easier. I know when I go in, it's that table, or that table, or that table, so...
Right.
But yes, it'll make it a nice smooth transition. What I think in the past, you know, depending on what type of election it was, I'd go to the fire station, and for another type, I'd go to St. Joe, because they would consolidate for certain events. And I think what would be helpful is when we've got the roster, what you have on a computer. And I know we send out voter registration cards, and it tells you what precinct you're in and such, but in my experience working as, as an election worker, that few people bring that card with them. And I walk through the door, and you know, what's your address, and you're trying to look at maps and figure out where someone should go. Would be easier to have that printed on the form.
Now with the e-poll books, the laptops they have, if they don't belong in that precinct, the workers can look and tell you if you're registered, if you need to go to Marina, or maybe you're not registered in the city at all. They'll have it all, you know, right there.
Thank you. Appreciate all the work that your office does.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens intended shall be recognized by the mayor for comment, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? Yes, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Carol Pascoe, Sixten Spruce Street, and I just wanted to comment on Michelle and, and the office. I have never gone into that office that I haven't been greeted kindly, treated professionally by people with great knowledge of what they're doing, and I just want to say thank you as a resident citizen.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? Yes, sir, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Steve Wall. I live at three fourteen Oak Street. I chose this time to comment because I see on the agenda that you have a, what you're calling a Dear, Dear Hurd Committee Report at your work session. Before I make my remarks, let me say that my previous job, I worked closely with city council members for almost ten years, so I do understand the work that is required of you. I don't want anyone to misread my comments or my purpose. I'm here, since this is Giving Tuesday, I wish to share with this body some of my studied opinions on procedures used in this body, specifically as it relates to the Dear Hurd, Dear Hurd Committee. Bottom line, Your Honor, is, according to the studies and the research that I've done, that committee no longer exists, and it would be out of order for you to receive this report at your next work session. The reason I say that is, is generally understood that special committees exist and... The reason I say that is, is generally understood that special committees exist until their task is completed. In this case, there is an exception to that rule. Because of the elections that was held, and because a portion of this body was replaced and is now a new body, just as you appoint new standing committees, any special committee that has not reported at that change of membership ceases to exist when its appointing body ceased to exist. So that Deer Heard Committee, that Deer Heard Committee went out of existence with your previous council. So right now, you have a parliamentary pickle. What do you do? Okay? In addition to that point, if you were to receive that report, because of the improper application of procedures, both from this body and from the committee, makes that report, in my mind, in my opinion, invalid and suspect. Reason I say that is that a committee is subordinate to you. It can only adopt its rules that you allow it to adopt. Cannot adopt its own rules. Because it's a special committee, when that committee was named, first person named is the chair. No exceptions. The committee is not allowed to elect a different person, other than the first person the presiding officer named. There were members listed, I'm going to rephrase that, there were people listed as present in the committee minutes who were not appointed to the committee. So, given the fact that, for example, another point, motions were not used in the committee. Votes were not taken. That committee used the basis of consensus for its decision-making. You are a majority-based body, okay? Therefore, that committee has to follow your rules, not their rules. So for it to use consensus violates your adopted rules to vote by majority decision. All actions of this council, all official actions are by ordinance, resolution, or motion, not consensus. Why is that important? Well, for example, rules are relaxed in committees. Motions do not require seconds in committees. Once a member says, "I think we should do this," or "I would like to do that," or whatever, however he rephrases it, it is still a motion, should be heard, should be considered, should be discussed, should be voted on. Yea or nay, or let's amend it. Okay? That was, that was not done on some, on several instances. Why it's important to have a vote? Certain motions in committees take at least a two-thirds vote. To resent or amend something previously adopted takes normally a two-thirds vote. But in a committee, there are instances when a majority vote is allowed to adopt that motion. So if they want to change their mind, that's fine. I'm not arguing with that. I'm not arguing with the substance of the report. Haven't seen the report. It's irrelevant, as far as I'm concerned. What I'm talking about is, the procedures used to arrive at your decisions have to be valid, have to be accountable, have to have authority. This committee lacks all of that, for the reasons of the improper application. What should have been done when that committee was appointed was it should have been given a date to report. Then you could have heard that report. But because you failed to do that when the committee was appointed, because the motion to appoint was incomplete, you're now in the situation, you have a report you can't hear. What do you do? Okay? Now, my suggestion, since parliamentary procedure is...
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Yes, I can. Since parliamentary procedure is to expedite business, not at the expense of people's rights, what's happened is, rights have been violated, okay? You had three people up for election. If all three would have been re-elected or not elected, new people replaced, it's a new body. They may have wanted to do something different. So that's why that matter temporarily disposed of, okay, falls to the ground with that, that committee goes out of existence. Again, you had this report, I hate to see the time wasted. So I searched and searched and searched. What can you do? My answer is this, my suggestion is this, that this body adopt a motion to suspend the rules that interfere with the reception of the Deer Heard Committee Report. If you do that, you get out of that pickle. It does not mean that you cannot, you can do that any time you want to, to violate your own rules. It just means, okay, we're in the quicksand, how do we get out? It's a temporary fix. But in the future, special committees should be instructed to report at a specific date. And also, that motion needs to include the purpose, because they can't do anything other than what you instruct them to.
Thank you.
If that's not included, how do we know as citizens that this committee is acting responsibly within its authority?
Okay, thank you.
Your pen.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to officials and staff. City clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Interim city engineer?
Two items. One, I spent some time this afternoon with Ted, he's in town for the entire weekend. One of the things we discussed was the status of the pilot township's discussions. And he agrees with me that unless there are objections from the council, I would continue to play the lead in those discussions for the next month or six weeks. Ted would participate in all meetings, but it would allow him the time to get up to speed without unnecessarily interrupting the flow of those discussions. So without objection, we'll both proceed that way. Number two, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve you these last eight months. And the citizens of Maneski, again, I've truly enjoyed it. I want to thank you for the time and the effort that you dedicate to this job, to the unbiased approach that you bring, to your ability to disagree without being disagreeable, and certainly to be civil to all of the staff and each other. I'd also like to thank all the city employees, being with the department directors, but continuing down through the ranks. You truly do have a dedicated group of employees that are loyal to the city, they're hardworking, and they care about your job. And finally, before I stop, I would be remiss if I didn't thank my wife, Anne, for allowing me this opportunity, because sometimes that was a hurdle as well. But thank you for the chance to serve again.
Thank you. The attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
DPW Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public Safety Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Finance Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Attorney? City Engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaton?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Zelinski?
I want everybody to enjoy themselves this weekend, it's going to be a fun time. And I want to thank the DPW, they seem to transform this city into a winter wonderland overnight. Just kind of blanking, there it is. I beg, hope to do it, just happens, it really looks nice. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Gudsky?
I have two things. On the discussion, when, and just for my, when we do the consent agenda, and we want to pull something, we're not necessarily pulling off the council, but can't we, and we do it, and we, like tonight, we wanted to bring out the cash balances. Isn't, doesn't it just fall into discussion?
If it's, there's many answers, depending on how technical you want to be. If you want to be completely technical, then you have to take it off the consent and wait for that opportunity in the agenda's regular form. A less formal way that is often used, if it's a simple question, that's not going to take more than 30 seconds or a minute, you just answer the question and then leave it on the consent calendar and deal with it. The way you did it tonight is technically correct, but not necessarily the most efficient. So if you wanted to try it the other way, you could do that too.
I'm not saying that, I'm just clarifying here in my head.
I would add to that, that a couple of years ago, we amended council guidelines, so that we wouldn't have to deal with two separate motions, that after the motion was made and supported to approve the consent agenda, we could just ask for something to be removed, and it would be removed, and then we'd go ahead and vote on the current motion, because we run into this in the past as well.
Okay. The other thing is, thank you. Thank you, Ben, thank you, Anne. Thank you for coming and helping us. I, I said I wasn't the big supporter at first, but thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmembers, next?
I would like to add my thanks with Councilman Zelinski to the Public Works Department for our overnight wonderland. I observed the people decorating the tree out in front of City Hall, and doing decorations down First Street. They do a very efficient and thorough job. My appreciation. Our thanks to public safety. We still haven't had any more home invasions, Chief?
No, sir.
Okay. Looks like we've found some of the right people to put the right pressure on. Thank you very much. And thank you, Ben, for your eight months.
Member Whedon?
It's been an honor and pleasure to work with you, Ben, over the past eight months. You've guided the city and done a wonderful job. I, I will miss you, and appreciate all of you, David.
May your pro temp go, Steve?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just echo, I mean, Ben, thanks for your efforts here, and thank your wife for concessions to let you go. Chief Bachmann, yeah, and your team for the diligent work. And if there's overtime, it's well money spent, and I thank your team for us, because that's, again, somebody that hadn't personally, to their mother, it's a, it's a good thing to see that that's been taken care of. And then Jeff, your team's done a great job. Hopefully get a little snow for the, for the, you know, sleigh bell weekend, but we'll see. That's all I have.
I want to welcome all our visitors who will be in town this weekend. Hope everybody arrives to their destinations and back home safely. The DPW is doing an awesome job, even though it's not snowing out there, you're making it look festive and getting everyone in the mood. And I too want to thank Ben for your last eight months. I've heard the stories, and I'm, about your prior stint here as city manager, and it was a privilege working with you. I'm glad I got to know you. You kept the ship upright moving forward, and I appreciate that. I know you missed out on a vacation with your wife, so I do appreciate what you gave up to be here and help us and help the city. I look forward to working with Ben.